Good evening and welcome to Tuesday night's City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. We'll call this meeting to order, and if we could please have the roll.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb. Councilmember Kaylee Clark. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I move that we excuse Kaylee Clark because she is way behind with her law school stuff and is dying right now. I thought we'd let her survive. So we have a first and a second. Thank you all. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it, and now I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. Quickly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. And Kent, if you could do the land acknowledgement, please, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, we acknowledge. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically this Noqami Indian tribe, and we thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you, and now I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We will now move to public comment. Thank you. So we have one, two, three, four, five. We have a good eight people. That is fabulous. And if Sally Farrell could step up to the mic.
Thank you. Good evening, council. It's great to see all of you. It's great to be out and about again. I walked over here without my walker, so hip hip hooray. I'm here as a representative of the Board of Directors and Advisory Board for Samamish Friends, and in front of you is a handout that we did. I just wanted to remind you about all of the programs that we have in the community. We have five programs, and that one pager is in front of you, and then if you flip that over, you're going to see some of the comments that we're going to make tonight. So we're a 13-year-old nonprofit, and I just want to say that as a representative of all of our board, the thrift shop is something that's been on our mind for a while, and we have worked hard to put together some ideas and actually a formal proposal that's about eight or nine pages long. So what you have tonight is an executive summary. We will have a formal advisory board for the thrift shop, and we want it to be under the oversight of our 501(c)(3). We want it to be on the CWU campus if and when you should choose to use that space for community purposes. I know that there are several things on the docket for decisions between now and when that decision is made, but we just want you to know that we're really interested in having community services in that space. In the beginning, there would be some daytime hours, two to three hours a day, maybe four hours, two to three days a week. We'd like to reach out to many of our seniors, and you know, one of our programs is the Samamish seniors, so we know that they could help us in providing staff, and we'll be looking for a couple of part-time managers who are volunteers in the beginning. You know, we are an all-volunteer organization, so we know that there are people out there who just want to do good in the community. All of our volunteers will be background-checked, and we will train them, and we will train them well. We're proposing that you would allocate some space. We're not going to give any exact numbers because that would be a future conversation at Central Washington University to establish this program because we think that we're part of your solution. All of the funds that we would raise, and if we had some expenses, those would come out, and so the net profits we could use to pay for, to partner with the city to make sure that we have programs that are out there. So the city, human services, residents, environment, our economy, and our community.
Thank you, Sally.
And so I'm done. Thank you. We've never had a thrift shop.
Our young city of Samamish has never had a thrift shop. We're surrounded with cities that have well-established ones. Samamish Friends has a vision, spirit, expertise, and a desire to bring one to our community. The thrift shop will operate under Samamish Friends' nonprofit 501(c)(3) status with outreach funding systems to help support other city nonprofits, civic, and community programs that benefit low-income, senior, kids, and teens. We will do this without regard to race, color, religion, creed, gender, national origin, age, disability, marital or veteran status, sexual orientation, or any other legally-protected status. How will we benefit others? The city. Funds raised help support the Senior Center and other city nonprofit and community activities per thrift shop policy guidelines to be established. Human service organizations. A list obtained from the city's Human Service Commission's grant applications to increase Samamish's community support. Residents. Shopping. A nearby location to donate. Donations that will benefit community programs. The environment. Recycling household items rather than taking to the landfills. Our economy. Good quality items donated here rather than taken to other area thrift shops. Our community at large. An increase in our social responsibility to continue serving each other. Our board president, Sally Farrell, has helped establish two nonprofit thrift shops and volunteered in a highly-successful Eastside Shop where her reorganizational skills and ideas grew sales from 3,000 a year to what is now 400,000 a year gross income. She also served as president to their advisory board. Her experience as a major retail store executive and buyer brings practical expertise, and her career in national, state, and local nonprofit development and training arenas, field of aging, has forged a strong desire to support her local community. In late 2023, several members of the Samamish Friends Board of Directors and their Samamish seniors advisory team visited the Edmonds Waterfront Center, a new facility opened four years ago, to replace the aging Edmonds Senior Center that was on the same site. With more than one level now, they are using it as a community center with programs for all ages. The majority of daytime programs are for young families and seniors, while the late afternoons offer programs that are operated by the City of Edmonds Park and Recreation Department. And Joyce is going to tell you more about that.
Ms. Bottenberg? Thank you. Apparently, we have Joyce Bottenberg coming up next.
Joyce Bottenberg, 40-year resident of the Plateau. The Edmonds Waterfront Center has an off-site thrift shop for increased visibility to the community. They're in a 30-by-70-foot space, including the receiving and the marking-up areas, in a strip mall that generates, this little shop, over $750,000 a year in gross sales. It has one employee. Samamish Friends, in coordination with the city, will carry liability insurance for the protection of staff when added, and volunteers and customers. Samamish Friends and the city will consult with a legal advisor to ensure all legal matters are addressed. Cost/risk will be discussed with both entities as the agreement is created. At the onset, there will be no paid personnel for the operation of the thrift shop, including managers and sales staff. The thrift shop advisory boards, Samamish Friends Board of Directors, and the city will, in collaboration with each other, develop one, three, and five-year strategic plans. The thrift shop is part of a holistic solution the community needs to help attain and maintain a rich social fabric over the cycle of life. Many have spoken over the last year about adding market-rate housing to meet community needs over time. Me too. We also support this, especially for our Samamish seniors and other demographic groups that need different housing for planned and unplanned life changes. We want to help longtime residents stay in Samamish, like me, and help newcomers enjoy the benefits of a stellar thrift shop. Additional information is available in a full proposal. When the timing is deemed appropriate, to be shared with the city council and in city staff. It covers these topics: thrift shop vision, advantages to community, governance, marketing strategies, business and social objectives, operations, financial projections, competitors, benchmarks, and risk. Let us work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a high school volunteer with the Samamish Friends, and just like me, I think the thrift shop provides a great and valuable opportunity for all high schoolers in, like, you know, the local schools in this area to volunteer and kind of get involved in a way, in like a kind of new and unique way, that isn't really present there before. You know, you see thrift shops and other kind of donation centers in places like Issaquah and Gilman, and I think having something like the thrift shop here in Samamish in a place that's walkable so that, you know, you don't need to be able to, like, drive long distances to kind of get somewhere, is going to help improve, like, the involvement of high schoolers in our community. As I look around the room, you know, I see there's not really that many young people in this room, and I feel like that's, like, totally fine, but I also want to see, you know, super, like, involved high schoolers and people who are really passionate about improving their city and making a difference in volunteering. So I think seeing more of people like me and people like Andrew in the room, the thrift shop will greatly assist with that. So I think, you know, having that will also provide a great community gathering space. You know, places like the library, places to eat, those are all places where, you know, high schoolers and other youth meet and share ideas, and someplace like the thrift shop will provide something like that as well, where, you know, people will be able to relax, kind of go browse and have fun with their friends without having to go to someplace like the mall. So, you know, these are all ways where the thrift shop will really benefit our community, and I think it would be a great way to bridge the gap between, you know, the leaders of Samamish and the youth and the leaders of tomorrow. That's all.
Thank you. Andrew Wang.
So I am Ayush's breed. I am a high schooler, providing my youthful perspective. So adding on to what he said, not only does it bridge the gap between the city leaders and the youth, but also, I think, the seniors of our area and the youth. You know, there are three high schools all around our area. There's Eastside Catholic, Eastlake, and Skyline. It acts as sort of an anchor from all these students to meet and greet, but also, you know, the thrift shop, I know that'll employ also, like, senior volunteers, and because we're connected to the Samamish Friends, there'll also be senior volunteers from that. And it'll have that new sort of, new form of cohesivity between the seniors and the youth as a result. Again, the location is extremely convenient, and also, as a youth myself, I know that thrifting in the past few years has been really trendy, and it'll definitely be a really big hit amongst the youth. I know, like, even a lot of my friends, they go down to Gilman to get their thrifting done, and if there's a new location here, it'll definitely attract that population over here instead. And lastly, so we did talk a lot about that revenue generation. So the Edmonds generates around $400,000 a year. If we could generate that same amount, not only will that cover the cost of the lease, but also more, and that enables the rest of the building, the rest of the CWU building, to be able to be used for something else. Ideas that come to mind include a robotics field or an area for mommy and me to thrive. And right now, CWU is kind of like a dead space, so the only people that go there, I know they do host events, but it's sort of periodic. The really people, the only people that go there are, like, the running start students and the people who actually attend CWU, and if we can transform that space into a place that holds these different types of places where people can convene and, like, what I used to say, like, share their ideas and just have fun, like a thrift shop and the robotics field and stuff, I think that would be a very, more community-oriented use of this space, this really large space in the middle of this really amazing area that's only being utilized for a school as of right now. That is all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Steve Christensen, Samamish for 38 years. I'm going to talk about the Central Washington University campus, but not about the thrift shop, but I will have a recommendation. I would like to see you as a group to make the decision to donate a portion to a senior In my analytical mind, I want to share some numbers with you. City of Samamish has got about 30% of the population that's older, that's over 50, and about 20% that's over 55, and around 5% that's over 70. And if you're going to get in my age category, it's about 1.5% of us. So it seems to me it's a good idea, and when you compare it to the Boys and Girls Club, roughly about 30% of the population in the city is under 20. I have visited, along with my wife, thanks to our son who lives in Edmonds, the senior center there, and I'm really amazed that it is a fantastic facility. So one thing I would add is, if you're going to do a thrift shop, all of these seniors that have all of these materials in their house that they have acquired as a result of raising their children and have no place to put it, could sell it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I feel like I kind of intersected the Samamish Friends, and I could not be more supportive of you all being here tonight. My name is Erin Longcherry, and I'm from the Garage Teen Cafe in Issaquah. I was here last week advocating for support of the Town Center project, and I'm here tonight for a similar purpose. I want to express my really strong enthusiasm for the opportunity before you all today, the chance to reimagine the CWU campus into a vibrant community hub. It's not often that a city gets a chance to reshape a space like this, and it's even more rare that you have a chance to do so in a way that brings people together in meaningful and potentially lasting ways that have real community impact. It's a really special opportunity, and it's something where you could build on the values inherent to Samamish, values of inclusivity, diversity, and a more welcoming community. A place with real purpose for Samamish's youth, for our teens, for seniors, for families, and even visitors to this city. It could be a real draw. This is a moment to really think boldly, and I know that there is a long road ahead in terms of cost analysis, planning conversations, rezoning. I know that that's a long go, but I would encourage you, at the very least, to not let cost be a barrier in a bold vision. There are significant funding opportunities out there right now, particularly around projects that foster community connection, support the arts, that support shared space and cultural opportunities. And so I would just urge you to consider that cost not be a primary barrier as you move forward in your planning conversations. The Garage is excited to partner with the city in whatever way we can, whether that's through grant-writing opportunities or helping to convene potential partner collaborators or through potentially having a role onsite in the new space. We are in, and we're excited, and we would love to join you all in building something really special for the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Awesome comments this evening. I'm going to do a heart-to-head-and-heart on housing, on numbers and effects. So off the bat, we have about 23,000 housing units in our city, 20,000 single-family and 3,000 multifamily. 85% were built by King County, and our city did 15%. You've heard me talk about categories of housing. A is affordable housing, under $500,000. B is market rate from 500 to 1.4. C are some condos and townhomes over 1.4, and D is a single-family. I'm calling to alleviate citywide housing imbalance that I call CHI of A, B, and C housing units. The needs across the board are large. They're from 10,000 to 26,000 in July of 2023 for cycle of life, but my initiative calls for meeting 5,000 B and C housing units alongside 2,100 affordable in the comp plan, mostly in centers, almost none in the neighborhoods. What are the fiscal effects of this? One-time revenues for the city, some $185 million. Annual recurring city net revenue, around $15 million a year. Average value savings per household that stays in Samamish is close to $3,000 a month. That's $250 million a year, and people can stay. What are key positive factors by achieving 7,100 new A, B, and C units over 20 years? We meet 70% of the lowest CHI threshold of need compared to housing built in Samamish from 1999 to 2024. One-third of that traffic and one-fifth of the students. And we bring to fruition a thriving Town Center and preserve neighborhood character. Awesome. And the other thing we need to do is to correct the Town Center FEIS. The FEIS overstates residential car trips and commercial car trips, and it understates internalization. The current FEIS alternative could support from 3,000 to 8,000 more units without generating additional traffic beyond what it identified back in 2007. Why add the 5,000 B and C housing units to the comp plan? To attain holistic added prosperity for posterity for residents, workforce, and our city. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up? If not, we'll move to online comment.
For our reasonable accommodation, those who have pre-registered by 5 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to provide comment. I see no commenters. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll move ahead then to, I'd like to see a motion or hear a motion for approving the consent calendar. So moved.
Seconded.
First and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Passes unanimously, and now we will move to presentations and proclamations. So our first proclamation will be read by Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb. This is for National Public Works Week, May 18th through 24th.
Whereas public work services are critical to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of the residents of Samamish, and the support and understanding of an informed community are vital to the efficient operation of these systems and programs, and whereas the 2025 National Public Works Week theme, People, Purpose, Presence, honors the dedicated professionals whose work impacts every aspect of daily life, from maintaining infrastructure and managing waste services to supporting emergency responses and environmental stewardship. And whereas public works professionals in the city of Samamish are ever-present, often working behind the scenes to keep our roads, sidewalks, stormwater systems, and public spaces clean, safe, and functioning year-round, and whereas their sense of purpose drives a commitment to sustainability, safety, innovation, and long-term community resilience, and whereas the team of public works engineers, operation crews, transportation planners, inspectors, maintenance workers, and administrative staff embodies the spirit of service and plays an essential role in making Samamish a vibrant, thriving city, and whereas recognizing and celebrating National Public Works Week allows us to express our gratitude and appreciation for their hard work, reliability, and dedication to the public good. Now therefore, Karen Howe, Mayor of City of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through, May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you. And I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize our public works managers who are here tonight to receive this proclamation on behalf of their departments. Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director. Greg Stamatoy, Deputy Director. LeWu, City Engineer, and Dan Johnson, Superintendent. And if you wouldn't mind coming up and receiving this proclamation so that we could actually get a picture with everybody, too, because we are extraordinarily proud of the efforts And next, we have our Pride Month proclamation, and this will be read by Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Proclamation: Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, Asexual, and Two-Spirit Plus. Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas the City of Samamish proudly supports and uplifts the LGBTQIA2S+ community, recognizing the value, strength, and diversity it brings to our city and beyond. And whereas the 2025 Pride Month theme, Louder, honors the bold legacy of those who fought free equality, celebrates the voices that have shattered silence, and calls on each of us to speak up against injustice and stand in solidarity with our LGBTQIA2+ neighbors. And whereas the LGBTQIA2+ community continues to face discrimination, erasure, and harmful rhetoric, making it all the more vital to affirm the right to live openly, love fully, and exist safely with dignity, joy, and visibility. And whereas the term LGBTQIA2+ encompasses a broad spectrum of identities, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer or questioning, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit individuals, along with other identities represented by the plus sign, reflecting the rich diversity within our community. And whereas Samamish is committed to fostering a culture of belonging and respect, and reaffirms its dedication to equity, inclusion, and human rights for all, regardless of sex- its dedication to equity, inclusion, and human rights for all, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. And whereas by embracing the spirit of louder, we celebrate not only resilience and progress, but also the ongoing work needed to create a world where every voice is heard and every person is valued for exactly who they are. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the entire Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit-plus Pride Month.
Thank you. And here to receive that proclamation, we have Erin Longcherry and Tiana Perry from The Garage Teen Cafe to receive the proclamation. The Garage is a wonderful nonprofit that focuses on providing inclusive space for teens to build community, express identity, and be authentically themselves. And I know this to be true because I have visited the teen garage on a couple of occasions. In fact, the last one was a art showing and I'm seeing one of the artists here tonight as a matter of fact, and got a chance to view some of the work that you've done. So, it's a, it's a special space. It's unique. You're not going to find it someplace else and it's not something you recreate in someone's garage. This is something that needs to be the teen garage. So with that, if you would please come up and we'll hand you this proclamation and get that fabulous photo taken. Okay. Now we have, I believe, new business. So we have a presentation from the YMCA. It's the annual report. And it looks like we have a few folks that will be participating in this.
Good evening.
Hi, it's good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks and Recreation. I have the pleasure of introducing your next presenter, Kelly Martin from the YMCA of Greater Seattle. She is the Branch Executive for the Samamish Community and Aquatic Center. For context and for those watching tonight, the city of Samamish is a contract city and this approach is no different in providing recreation services. The city has an agreement with the YMCA of Greater Seattle to operate and maintain our community center. The agreement requires the YMCA to provide the city with an annual report which is included in your agenda packets. Kelly will go over the highlights for you in her presentation. And before I turn it over to Kelly, I did want to mention that this partnership extends beyond leasing the building to the YMCA. The YMCA is an active participant in many of the city's events, including they will be hosting a booth at the upcoming Pride event. Last year, we tried something different for the Halloween event. We actually combined forces and put on a joint event and had it, the city and the Y put this on together or at the plaza and the YMCA building was open to anyone in the community as well. So with that introduction, I will turn it over to Kelly.
Thanks, Anjali. Again, my name's Kelly Martin. Thank you for having me to share more about the Samamish Y. Just a little bit about me, I've been with YMCA of Greater Seattle for over 10 years, serving at the Downtown Y, the North Shore Y, and the Dale Turner Y. So I'm happy to be here in the Samamish community. I'd just like to start off first with thanking the city for being such a strong partner for us in 2024 and before. This has been a real year of growth, grit, tile project, and gratitude and none of it would have been possible without the powerful partnership that we have together. From the farmer's market to the Fall Festival, we've really worked together to make this community thrive. The Y really starts with a staff. None of them are here, but I would like to thank them. They are really the heartbeat. We are 210-strong in 2024. They're made up of leaders, role models, motivators, and magic makers, I like to call. From swim instructors to camp counselors, group fitness instructors to youth mentors, they showed up with passion and creativity every day. Even through a pool closure and some leadership transitions, their energy never wavered. They're the reason that the Y really feels like home. Second, I must thank our Board of Directors. In 2024, we had 18-strong, which is amazing. They really are the visionaries, the fundraisers, and the cheerleaders behind the scenes. They steward our mission, stretch our thinking, and ensure we serve with heart and purpose. Their time and leadership helped us fund scholarships, expand equity work, and connect more deeply with our neighbors. Okay, everyone likes numbers. Let's talk impact. In 2024, we had over 489,000 visits to the Y, meaning we were very busy. We were able to award over $185,000 in scholarships. This includes membership scholarships as well as program scholarships. So if a member needs help with their monthly finances for the scholarship, or for the membership, and/or needs help with swim lessons, getting to camp, any of the things that we operate inside the building that are additional costs to the membership, we were able to award those scholarships. We taught over 7,100 swim lessons, which is quite a feat considering that the pool was closed for half of the year. We served over 13,000 meals in the Samamish community and helped more than 1,000 kiddos discover sports. Our signature events like Extravaganza and Fall Festival, like Anjali spoke about, brought over 5,000 residents, both Y members and Samamish residents, really helping our branch be full of energy and all people that walk in our community. If you know anything about the Y, we are all about the fun, whether it be zumba in the Commons or kids in our kid zone. We had over 31,000 visits to our kid zone. This is part of a membership benefit. It's two-hour drop-in care for our members where they can be safe, silly, and be in a place where they can thrive while their parents catch a breath, whether that's taking a shower, having a cup of coffee, swimming in the pool, or catching a group X class. We have a space for them. We also had over 90 group exercise classes per week that we offered for really anyone ages young to our active older adult community. Another part of what makes the Y different is our belief that really no one is left behind. In 2024, we were able to raise $134,000 in fundraising dollars. This is not membership dues. This was highlighted with our breakfast. We could see up here that had over 200 people take part in hearing stories about what makes the Y the Y, from offering safety around water to making sure that seniors have a safe place to live and to ensuring that no child goes hungry. And this really is what makes the Y unique. We like to say, "Membership dollars keep our doors open," but it's the fundraising dollars that open doors for all. So these are some of the things that we did in 2024. Access for All, that's our membership scholarships, providing meals, those 13,000 meals. We have a Safety Around Water program that allows any child to learn safety around water, no financial barrier. Of course, creating a sense of belonging for our seniors and making sure that we have wraparound services for youth and young adults. And here are some of the things that make us unique for Samamish residents. Our partnership with the city allows us to offer high-impact, low-barrier programs that directly benefit the residents. In 2024, we hosted Free Community Swim Sessions 3 every Sunday, Community Pickleball on Friday afternoons, plus 55-and-over Community Pickleball at CWU, two active older adult classes a month, one which is a fitness-based class, one which is non-fitness-based, plus chronic disease programming, like pedaling for, sorry, that's hard to say, pedaling for Parkinson's, and something that we call ACT, which is actively changing together. It's a family program to help prediabetic children. We brought other things like yoga in the park and zumba on the Commons and we were also a warming or cooling place during emergencies, like the Cyclone. Okay, did I miss one? Nope, sorry. And then I just wanted to touch base on some of the collaborations and connections that we have within the community. Samamish Friends helped us with the pickleball opportunity at CWU. We have partnered with CWU to offer, to use the space to have youth sports as well as some other master dance classes like zumba. We've partnered with the Issaquahask Food Bank to collect food during the holiday season and then we had our own Holiday Giving Tree, which served over 142 families in the Samamish community. And our favorite topic, the tile project. It definitely tested our patience, our schedules, and at times, just waterproofing in the building. But we're very excited to say that it is done. It's beautiful, back in action as of August of last year. It did temporarily close one pool at a time, but it didn't close our ability to serve. We are so appreciative of the members that stuck with us. Our staff adapted and we are ready to host any aquatic activities that you could desire. And we just want to thank our partners, the city and of course Abbott Construction for all their help. Inclusion isn't just a feature of the Y, it's really our foundation. Whether you're a senior doing chair yoga, a child learning to swim, a teen navigating anxiety, or a parent looking for a safe space, we are here for you. We ran over 13,000 hunger-relief meals, expanded our Giving Tree program to support 142 families, and kept programs accessible with nearly $200,000 in scholarship. And we really believe that the Y is for all. I'd just like to close with a great quote from Booker T. Washington is, "If you want to lift up yourself, lift up someone else." And that's really what the Y does and that's what this partnership with the city of Samamish makes possible. Thank you for believing in our mission and investing in your community. We are excited to grow, serve, and celebrate alongside you in 2025. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. I've been looking for questions from the council now. Finally. Councilmember Gupta.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I always look forward to these updates every year. It's so inspiring to see the effect that the Y has in the reach, the number of memberships. I just had one quick question. The utility costs in the financial report were significantly lower this year compared to last year, even with memberships going up. And I was curious why that was, if that was related to the pool closure or if there are new efficiencies that were found?
Though I wasn't at the branch last year, I came on January 1st. I would guess that that was because of the pool closure. Does someone from the crowd have any? I got the thumbs up, so yeah.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I know how much you do with the community and I love that you're partnering with our amazing Parks and Rec Department as well. And I just want to thank you for being a great community partner, so appreciate it.
Thank you, that means a lot. Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Lam.
I also want to thank you for being here and for partnering with the city. It's good to see some of the free programs that you have. I don't think a lot of people in the community realize that, so it's really good to promote that. When we were touring after the tile renovation was complete, when council went through, I remember someone said that the Skyline High School team may be looking at the pool as their place to practice. I don't know if they're doing that now.
We have reached out to all three high schools, actually, so working with them to see if what we have available works with, for their needs. We do have some other partners that do use our pool for swim practice. Okay, great, thank you.
So thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation. I also really appreciate you being so responsive to my request to do something very specific to Samamish residents, because I think there's confusion at times in terms of, well, is it a community center? You know, how much does it really help non-members? And so that message, that one slide, that's extraordinarily helpful and it's one that I hope that you actually promote on social media so that people understand just what's available, because I do worry that they don't know, that they just don't know. And I think if they knew that there was an opportunity to go for a swim or something like that on a Sunday afternoon, I think it'd be amazingly helpful. I also had another question having to do with federal dollars. I believe I'd heard that Ys across the nation were being impacted by some budget decisions. I'm wondering if yours is as well, because you're all connected.
Yeah. Thank you for the comments and we'll make sure that we promote more of what we offer to the community. Ys across the country, yes, have been impacted. YMCA of Greater Seattle has definitely been impacted. I don't want to speak out of turn so my boss can interject behind me. The branch itself hasn't been impacted yet. It's really more of our wraparound services, our social impact center, we call it Y-SIC. All of those programs are grant or federally funded, so we have seen impact there.
Okay, because that is something that we're actually trying to measure to some extent as well. And so as you are able to total up what some of those impacts are, I would appreciate getting that forwarded to me, actually, because as I say, we're trying, it's very, when you hear it piecemeal, all these different organizations having a hit here and a hit there, having a cumulative number is, can be very, very powerful and it can be useful. And also understanding, what are you guys doing to, to, I don't know if counter it is the right word, but to highlight the fact that this is actually happening? There are risks with that.
Yes, there are, yes. There has been some communication that has gone out to our partners and our donors to sort of explain what funds may have been lost or we are anticipating that we're losing. I think where it will impact the Samamish community is what I spoke about, the wraparound care of Y-SIC. We serve youth in King County and so if any of those funds are depleted, it is our youth that will be impacted. So we could get those numbers for you.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. Any other questions, council? Okay. Well, thank you again so much for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
And now we have another presentation, which will be with Anjali Meyer and Janie and Emily. It looks like it will be transition plan for the city-owned facility at, well, because we're not saying formerly, formerly Central Washington University, so 128th Avenue Northeast. So I tried to talk long enough to give you guys time to get up to the, are you good? Okay.
Good evening again, council. And for the record, Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks and Recreation. And yes, your next presentation is the transition plan for the city-owned facility at 120-200th Avenue Northeast after Central Washington University vacates the building at the end of June. I'm joined by Janie Walzer, Management Analyst for our department, and Emily Scott, Recreation and Cultural Services Manager. Behind the scenes, we have worked with every department in preparation for tonight. We've worked closely with the city manager's office, legal, IT, finance, community development, and of course, Parks and Recreation. And staff have also done a couple of walkthroughs with Central Washington University just to understand what are they leaving behind, what are they taking away, just for us to know what we'll have to deal with to be able to provide seamless service to the community that is using the building right now, subleasing the building, starting July 1st. Janie will run us through a presentation and then we'll be happy to take questions from council.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So as you know, Central Washington-
So by way of background, the facility was constructed in 2008, and the city purchased it in 2015 for a little over $6 million. The building measures almost 31,000 square feet and sits adjacent to a wetland area on two acres of land that are just over 22 acres. And the major amenities of the building include a gym with a small stage. There's a side room off of that gym that could be a commercial kitchen. There are five offices, six classrooms, and then two large open areas. At the time of purchase, it was that city council's intent to attract a higher education partner to the plateau, but it was never their intent to retain long-term ownership of the building. And to that end, the lease was structured as a lease-to-own, incentivizing the university to one day purchase the building outright. However, due to financial constraints, the CWU could no longer afford to sustain that lease, and the level of subsidy that they requested of the city was not something that we were able to provide. One note on permitting is the lot is currently zoned as residential, so use as a community or cultural center is not something that's permitted. The university operated under a conditional use permit that was issued in 2017, but after they vacate, the building's use will be non-conforming, so it can continue to operate and be occupied for 12 months, at which point it will be considered abandoned. Staff is able to rezone or issue another CUP, but that needs to be worked into Community Development's staffing plan, so that's something to consider. In 2022, we did a citywide facility conditions assessment, and the good news is that the city is in good condition, but still there are about $5 million in estimated needs that need to be addressed or invested in about 15-year horizon. These costs are based on 2022, so they have not been adjusted for inflation. Things today cost more than that. The transition-related expenses that we'll go over tonight are also not included in these costs, so this is just to keep the building operational and open. And also, as we move into the building, we might identify additional deficiencies that need to be addressed, more things that need to be fixed. And then Anjali has more information about what each of these categories are.
We had a question on what the different costs are, and they are really in three buckets. One is observed deficiencies, and those are things that relate to life safety or energy efficiency and do need to be taken care of in a short period of time. A couple of them have already been addressed, so this building didn't have any fall protection on the roof, and that was addressed last year. And there are other issues like insulation that is, that needs attention, that we do need to take care of. The second biggest bucket is predicted renewals, and that is basically when elements of the building are at the end of their useful lifecycle, we have to plan to replace them. And there's a little flexibility in the timeline of doing that. So one example is the roof will come up for replacement in some years. So that's the biggest bucket of money. And then the third and final bucket are opportunities, so these are not required but would improve user experience and building performance. And examples of those are like EV charging stations for cars, or basically upgrading the lighting to LED, and those are optional.
Okay, so that's the background of the building, but moving forward, what are we going to do? There are basically three options moving forward. We could rent the facility to another primary user who rents the entire facility. We could sell the property, or we can maintain ownership and take over operations ourselves. Each of these options comes with benefits and trade-offs. So the first option of leasing the facility, we would need to find a new anchor tenant who is willing to pay market rate rent for the entire building. We would still have staffing costs to manage that tenant relationship, and also those capital improvements that Anjali just mentioned, we would still have those on the line. Selling the property would remove all those future costs, but we don't yet know the market value of the building, so we'd have to do that assessment, and we don't know the buyer interests. There are also constraints of the law, like being next to a wetland and being zoned residential, so that would impact the marketability of the property. And then maintaining ownership does provide space for city or community use, but it would require substantial staffing and budget that we don't currently have. So if we do that option, we would need to identify a new funding source. And then we have more information on what it would look like to maintain ownership of the building. This slide summarizes those options, starting July 1 after the university vacates the facility. The primary focus that we'll discuss tonight is maintaining basic functionality of the building, but not expanding operations, so no new programming or no new tenants, just in the short term, while we get the building operational. So if the city maintains ownership and goes along with the current leases, there are some things we need to do in transition costs that would be between $175,000 and $275,000. And there's such a wide range here, because we're still gathering costs, we also don't know the direction. So the bare minimum, 175, but if there's additional things that council would like us to do, that would cost more money. Continuing ongoing facility operations would be about $190,000 a year, just to keep the building open and operational and support existing uses of those subleases. Some of these costs did exist with CWU, but some of them are new. So for example, we are taking on facility billing, which is about $60,000 a year. Also, additional staffing to be there while there are renters is a little bit more of a cost. Additionally, the $350,000 annually you see is if we take that $5 million from the condition assessment and put it over 15 years, we can plan for 350 each year. Other options we can do is to evaluate some small uses that the city could benefit from, one example of which is taking one of the classrooms and making it usable for off-site records storage, which would eliminate the cost for Iron Mountain, which is about $30,000 to $40,000 a year, and it would take about $10,000 to get those, what are they called? Shelves? Thank you. To get those shelves set up and make sure that the room would work for that. So continuing existing subleases, that currently includes the YMCA, which programs the gym. There are some tutoring groups that use a few classrooms throughout the week, and then Microsoft uses some of the parking stalls for their commuter program. So those are the main three groups. And then just to emphasize again, there's no additional staffing or budget to expand beyond these uses that we've talked about tonight. That includes any new tenant inquiries that we talked about earlier, but if you want to explore these options, it's possible. We are just looking at a long-term planning timeline. And if that's the direction you want to go, it's important to note that it's not currently in our city's work plan, so we'll have to return to you at a later time to add it to the work plan with budget for staffing and any upgrades that need to happen. But assuming that happens, the first step in long-term planning is community engagement, as we want this to be a co-created space with the community to make sure it's really fitting their needs. And that could be recreation, education, it could be more civic use, but we don't know that until we ask them. Expanding use also means, how can the facility be used? So what capital improvements are going to be required? What operational models do we want to pursue? But once we have a better understanding of the direction that council wants us to take and what the community is looking for, at that point, we'll be able to have a better idea of what it's all going to cost and a better budget. So right now, what long-term use is going to cost, we just don't know. Also, the work would require rezoning. Like I said, that just has to be worked into Community Development's work plan, along with all of their other planning efforts that they have going on. And then finally, to be realistic about our resources, the level of staffing, you've heard me talk about it, but I really want to hammer it home, is we don't have it right now. So one long-term option you've heard before is the Metropolitan Parks District, and this building could be looped in to the scope of an MPD, which would provide stable and dedicated funding for operations, maintenance, or potential capital upgrades to keep this building meaningful in the long run. So tonight, we're asking for your direction on how to proceed, and this is a reminder of what those options are. So find a new sole renter, sell the property, or maintain ownership and operations, which we just went into in depth. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mayor Howe for questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation, and council, what are your questions? Councilmember Gupta?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, there's a lot of community interest in the potential of this space. I guess I will first say, I do support the city maintaining ownership and operations. I think that makes sense. We have a lot of community need. I know the building can't be all things to all people, but clearly, we are not short of demands. That being said, if we were to rent to a single new tenant, do we have any idea of what that market rate would be?
As in what the cost?
Yeah, if we were to pursue a single tenant.
Yeah, we did do some studies, and it ranges from whether you do a gross or a net rent, it's somewhere in the $400,000s to $500,000 a year rent.
And so my understanding was, even with the existing CWU lease, we were subsidizing their rental to a portion. Is that, would that still be the case with market rate, where we'd be subsidizing the tenant to some degree?
If we got full market rate, we would be close to breaking even.
Okay, so at least to me, that doesn't seem like we're getting a whole lot of benefit there. I mean, it depends on who the tenant would be, but at least for me, I would love to have the city take over operations. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, everyone, for your presentation, and thank you for those who came to give public comment tonight about this issue. I really appreciate your input and hearing what you have to say about how you believe the future of this building should look. I am in favor of the city maintaining ownership and imagining what the future of this building could be. I think this is a unique opportunity. I know back in the day, when we entered the lease with CWU, we had an idea of what a great thing it would be to have a third-level institution in our city, which I still think that that is a remarkable vision also. And maybe down the road, that is something the city would think about, but I think we've a unique opportunity to build something that we have been lacking, a space for our teens, a space for our seniors, et cetera, and whatever else that might develop into. So I fully support that idea of going down the road and seeing that the city could maintain this building, what it could be to our community or growing community in the future. And so I would love to hear more about that. So thank you so much.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, did you, was that an open question?
Okay. That's just my desire.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Stewart?
Oh, I didn't know we were supposed to talk about our desires. That could take a while. No, thank you for the presentation. The $5 million over 15 years, that is just for sort of the regular maintenance. That does not include replacing the kitchen that was pulled out, does it?
Upfitting the kitchen is smaller parts, no, it does not include.
Okay, so that cost would be in addition to the cost here, okay. Do we know why the kitchen was removed from that building? Anybody?
Our councilmember, I'll grab that one.
It pains me.
I think at the time, it wasn't necessarily being used, and the cost to continue to maintain and keep the permits up and everything probably didn't make sense, and so they took the option to lower the, you know, to lower the overall costs and take the kitchen out. I don't, there doesn't appear to be anything that has a, a sort of a paper trail about what that decision process was. But I would say, and I think the team laid this out, that if council chooses to have the city retain ownership, I think that's something that we would have to invest in to make it viable, no matter what we did otherwise.
Yeah, and I'm definitely in favor of the city maintaining the ownership. In addition to the ideas that we've heard here, there are a multitude of community groups who are in desperate need of meeting spaces. There is, you know, a need for the stage to be able to utilize that stage for community groups. I know lots of people are like, they can just use the schools. The school stages are in use a lot, and the schools don't have the funding to pay for that, right? Because they have to have their staff there whenever their stages are in use, and they often only have one person who manages the theaters. So that's not necessarily a viable option. So I think there's just a ton of uses that we could get out of that. I'd love to see a little bit more detail around, like, what would it really take to, you know, what's sort of the minimum we would have to do to be able to start doing a few things, whether it's renting out meeting space? I suspect the kitchen might be needed before we could bring the seniors over, but like, what would some of those immediate-term plans look like, and sort of the costs, and then sort of what those community benefits are while we do that longer-term planning? Because I suspect, as we look at the longer-term planning, we would want to look at it in context of sort of our entire city's master plan, right? As we look at Big Rock Park South, where we have big plans for creating some facilities there as well, and to really identify what needs we would, we would want to fill in this space versus some of those others. So I'm definitely in favor of looking at that, but I'd love to see us be able to put this to use in some form, in addition to the Y and the Microsoft parking, as soon as possible, just because there are so many community demands. And some of that, right, like the stage, we may be able to do that with minimal, you know, minimal efforts to be able to make that available. And I understand that there are staffing needs and costs that would go along with that, but again, I think the desire and the need and the benefit to the community would be huge. So thanks again for your presentation.
Deputy Mayor Lam?
So I am also in favor of maintaining ownership of this property. I think it's a great opportunity for our city to have a true community space for our young people and for our seniors. I love that it's in close proximity to the town center and the high schools. It's such a great place, I think, and again, we have just a great opportunity. I'm curious as to the 22 acres and how much of that is encumbered? And I only ask that, and is, like, how much of it, like, and this may be unpopular, but I'm just exploring here, like, could we sell some of it to offset? It's an opportunity, could we consider, it's the city-building, affordable housing partnering, you know, on a part of the parcel? Just a question.
We could look at that. The site is fairly encumbered. Most of it is wetlands and wetland buffers, and now the only way we will be able to develop it further is because of the footprint that has already been created. So areas that are impacted, we could match that. That is something we can work with Community Development to see if there is opportunity to go above and beyond and partner and subdivide, if you will.
Yeah, I'd be really curious to see if that would work, and also, and I see in your presentation that you'd come back with numbers for, like, short term and longer term. Thank you.
Other questions, council? Councilmember Trine?
So how many acres again?
22.
22. And what, anyone have an idea of the ballpark on price to sell it? If we paid $6 million for it, what's the value today?
I do not, and...
So nationally, on the average, it's just, let's just run a number here, just for fun, though. Is that about every 10 years, land value doubles? I'm saying Sumamish, it's closer to seven lately, but, so let's say it's worth $12 million. So, or we could sell it for $12 million. And then even with the current footprint that's there, if it were to go up to 85 feet high, then someone would come in and look at that and say, hey, here's an opportunity to build in the town center and put something in there that would meet some of our new regulations and some of the needs that have been addressed. So, so one, I would not just throw out the idea that selling this property, then take that money and put it into a Big Rock Park and actually open up a park, and moving that money over to actually creating something that is already there and making it open and usable would be something that I'd be interested at least in looking at. Second would be the one renter. So when you, because here's my challenge, is when you state that it's a short-term use, so what is short-term? One year, two year, three year?
Right now, we are planning for the first 12 months, because that is as long as this conditional use permit runs.
would be something that I'd be interested at least in looking at. Second would be the one renter. So when you, because here's my challenge, is when you state that it's a short-term use. So what is short-term? One year, two year, three year?
Right now, we are planning for the first 12 months because that is as long as this conditional use permit runs. And then we do have to get past summer. As you know, our small and mighty recreation team is working without an intern this year and putting on all their events. They are busy with lifeguarding, their volunteer and restoration events, they help work the market. So we don't have the staff capacity to do anything more through the summer, but we will be back in the fall with a proposal of what it will take. And we will also have to look at permitting. We will have to come up with rental policies. If there is a way to extend the permitting while we do a feasibility study and make the building more available, then we'll have to look at market rates for these various rooms. We'll have to come back to council, have you adopt rental policies and then gear up more staffing and then be able to use the building.
And the rental, if we expand the rental, then it pays for the staffing? Or is that something you have to figure out still to bring to us?
Councilmember Trine, I'm happy to take this one on. For all the benefits of any community center, doesn't matter where it is, there's not a single community center that is not subsidized by other city funding, whether it's general fund or otherwise. There, we couldn't charge nearly enough, or if we did, nobody would come if we were trying to truly make all of our costs back. So this would have to be, and that's why we were suggesting one of the options is if you just lease the whole facility out, then your hands off. And I don't know what that cost would be and we haven't done the work to look at what the value would be to put it on the market, but I think that's why we're looking for direction now before we go spend any dollars in those other directions. We don't want to, we want to be judicious with the dollars that we do have to try to figure out what the path forward is. I think what you're hearing from the team and what I'm hearing from council overall is to go back and do that work. And Councilmember Stewart, you're raising great points. I think our challenge will continue to be that we are, in order to open the building up at any point in time, it has to be staffed. We, if we open it up more than it is at the moment, we can't rely necessarily on facility monitors to do that. So we would have to find another way. That'd have to be ongoing revenue to pay for staff positions to be able to run the facility as a rental. That is a line of business we're actually not currently in. All we really rent out is Beaver Lake Lodge and picnic shelters, which is just a different setup overall. So moving forward, you know, we would love to explore the possibility, what does it look like to go into a new line of business, but that's going to require a fair amount of planning work on, you know, on our end before we could come back to you all with real numbers. The same way if we went, if you gave us direction to test the open market, we would have to go back and hire some real estate consultants and do that work. So I just want to be clear that, you know, whichever one has some costs associated. And so we're really looking for direction to, for one and not others, so that we can be as directed as possible with whatever dollars we do spend.
Well, let's see. Before we go back to you, Councilmember Stewart, I'll just go ahead with my comments. Unless you, okay. And questions, actually. I looked up on Zillow, very reliable. It said it was $8 million and it had three bedrooms and one bath. So, you know, you can use that number because that's helpful. Although it's not that far off actually from where Councilmember Trine was headed, I think, for what the cost of the building would be. Because I thought about, okay, what if we flattened it? What if we turned it into housing? We own the land, we could do affordable housing, we could do a mix of housing. So that look, that sounds appealing to me in a lot of ways. However, this is such a gift to have this crazy building that's just right here and staring us in the face. Is it attractive? No, no, it is not. But that doesn't matter. It's usable. It's usable. And I think that there are wild ideas that people have that they want to, the opportunity to see if there's something that could work. And it's almost too good an opportunity just to pass on. So I am in favor of maintaining the building. I do believe it will be expensive. I do believe we will have to accommodate this in our budget over time. I don't, I do believe we will have to subsidize it over time. I also believe that there's some crazy ideas, ideas out there that might just work. The Mercer Island Thrift Shop, it's insane how much money they make off that. They also have 50 volunteers, 50. That's a five zero. That's a lot. So I am not underestimating the amount of effort it takes to do some of this work. It's heavy lift and it's a long-term lift. We were talking about short-term to the, you know, end that 12-month period. Long-term is long-term. So I do see this as an opportunity. I would like to cost it out so that we could figure out where some short, where some potential wins are. Is there an opportunity to do something that makes sense? I do have a concern about the wise price that they're currently paying for that space. I know it's high for them. So I wouldn't count on that 10K a month. I think that's something that needs to be negotiated again. Because I think this, it's a do-over. It's a, it's a reset. Does that give you clarity on what my thoughts are? Okay. Now, Councilmember Stewart, did you have more?
Yeah, thank you. I just thought of two other question, well, one question and two other comments. So one question would be, as a contract city, have we considered looking at contracting out the staff to do those rentals and to have people on site? And would that be more cost-effective than, than full-time employees? So that's just kind of a question or an idea there as we look at, again, across the city, getting into sort of that new line of business and kind of sticking with our contract model. And then I know, Scott, when, when we spoke about this in our one-on-one, we talked about like a short, a mid, and a long-term idea. And so I know for you guys, short-term is sort of a year. I think midterm is sort of that, what are some things we can do to sort of entertain some of these other community ideas. But long-term, I agree. I think we have to be bold. And I think we really have to think about big, bold things. And I think there are a number of directions we can go. And again, this is long-term. This is probably 10 or more years out. But to really think about, could that become our together center, right? Where we could have community center facilities on the bottom with some services? And then would that be a great location for some of the other housing needs that we haven't yet planned for, which is our transitional and permanent supportive housing? So I think there are some really big, bold ideas, but that to me is the long-term, right? There's sort of the short and the midterm. And then the last thing I just want to say is that I heard pretty distinctly that there were lots of people in the community who would help us apply for grants and raise money to help make this a reality. So I don't want to forget about all of those volunteers who are going to help us make this a reality and help us with some of those subsidies. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I did have one other point, too, I wanted to just bring up. In terms of emergency shelter, because this would become that potentially, could you also include in your planning where the emergency shelter exists in that plan? So that's, you know, because I anticipate that this could be the place where we could do the overnight sheltering if we needed to.
With some improvements, one of the first being a generator, which would need some engineering and figuring out what is the capacity and all of that. So that would fit somewhere between the short and long-term plan.
I think, Mayor, if I may, I just want to follow up a little bit to what Councilmember Stewart was raising. And I think what we are driving at from the staff perspective is that we have this first year where we're going to try to figure out what on earth we can do and what it costs and all those other pieces. And that next group is, that term is, depending on what we come back with and the direction then you give, then we would, that would be sort of the midterm. And the longer term is part of this comprehensive planning process where we would determine what that is. And then, and then we would all have a great conversation about, well, what all do we need to do to be able to get to that, whatever that is, whether we keep the building as-is, flatten it like the mayor says, or something in between, or add to it, like the original design plans, which our community development director so kindly sent me, that there are a lot of possibilities. And I think that's the exciting part. And I'm hearing from the community as well, there's a lot of possibilities. In fact, to the point where I'm going to guess that we're going to have way too many to actually try to accommodate. And so part of this is to be able to get it all out there and really have a community conversation about what makes sense before we try to dive into the tactical, how do we make it work? And I think that's what we were essentially asking you all for a little bit of time to do the initial pieces, like, I know when we were talking with the team, and we've got to change the locks, I mean, just basic stuff. And we need some better safety lighting in the back where people park because you can't see it from the road. Just some things that if it's going to be a city facility, we want to make sure that it is safe and usable and that everyone feels like it's okay to be there. So those are those, those very short-term. And then those are the dollars that we need to spend. And then if we want to do things like install a commercial kitchen, then, then that's starting to say, okay, we're going to invest a little bit here, which makes a ton of sense. If that's the direction council wants to go, then we would, we would come back and recommend, here are the things that we think you need to spend money on now. Those would be one-time dollars. And then talking about the longer term gets into the more of the staffing and ongoing running of an operation like that. So we're excited about the opportunity and we're excited to engage with the community about what those opportunities could be.
Councilmember Trine, did you have another comment?
Yes, Scott, I appreciate that because I think that's one of the main goals that we should have on this is reaching out to the community. Because I believe that there's probably a large percentage of the, of the community here right now that doesn't even know that the CWU is going to be empty. So it'd be really good of us to take our time and make sure that this is something that the community is aware of and that the direction in which we're headed is very clear. And then I would also say on top of that is that it needs to be clear on what the cost is and what the benefit is. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to the next wave of information that we get. And next, we have up a presentation on the public records update. We're expecting Rachel, Amber, and Sabrina.
So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. For the record, Rachel Bianchi, Deputy City Manager. Very pleased to be up in front of you this evening to herald the great work of your City Clerk's Office around public records. So we're going to go through, we, my colleagues are going to go through a presentation about, you know, what, reminder of what public records are, how things are working, give you some details on requests that we've been seeing and trends that we've been seeing, and then some updates that we are working on and process improvements. So with that, I'm going to introduce Amber Anderson, your Deputy City Clerk.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. And I'd also like to introduce our Public Records Officer, Sabrina Ottnas. And if we can move to the next, first slide. To briefly review what a public record is, we know it to be virtually anything that is prepared, owned, or retained to conduct city business regarding, regardless of physical form or characteristic. Next slide. And the Public Records Act requires certain procedures to be adopted by an agency, some of which are to designate and identify a PDO, adopt an agency PRA policy, provide PRA and records management training to elected officials and to the PDO no later than 90 days after they're elected or assume their duties, and to track the city's requests, along with many other documentation requirements. In addition to the Public Records Act, the city has its own public records policy that guides our work on how we fulfill our requests. Later on this evening, we'll talk more about some updates that we're proposing. But as a reminder, here's the last update to our policy that council approved in 2023. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Sabrina for more on the city's PRR process.
Thanks, Amber. Great to be with you, Council. So the city receives public records requests in a variety of ways. They can be submitted in any manner, but we try to point folks toward our public records request form and city website for ease of tracking and, and receiving records. But even if we receive PRRs in a different way, we still log them and they can be tracked by the clerk's office and the public can view them through our city website. To be in compliance with the PRA, the city must respond within five business days by doing one of these five things listed on the screen here. Although the PRA doesn't require agencies to search for and provide records within five business days, we do try to provide the records as efficiently as possible. If they're asking for something easily identifiable, like an electronically available building permit, for instance, we will respond by providing the record. If the request is larger, we will respond with number threes approach. I'd like to highlight, since Amber and I have joined Sammamish, we have not had to deny a public records request. We aim to provide the fullest assistance and work with requesters to provide what they're looking for. And if we are not the custodian of what they're looking for, we assist in referring requesters to the proper channels. There are many times I have found where requesters may not know how to ask for the records they're looking for, and our team does take the time to provide a high level of customer service to each requester. Council, I want to mention that I do, I do take great pride in the service we provide and have found that by approaching PRRs in the way that we have with curiosity, this, this service we provide does contribute to us building public trust and increased satisfaction in the long run, which is something I think we should all be really happy about. There are many factors influencing the estimated time it will take to fulfill a PRR. When myself and the clerk's team does provide the time estimate, it must be reasonable and based on the other essential functions of our duties. We take into consideration the nature of the request, the record type, the other departments that we will collaborate with, and other requests that are in the queue to determine within reason the timeline of records production. The city categorizes requests one through four, with a category one having a small volume of easily retrievable responsive records, and a category four having a large volume of responsive records, requiring legal review and being complex in nature. When the same request or submit more than one category three or four, our city policy allows us to process each request one at a time to ensure equitability to all requesters in the queue. And we'll touch base on the categories on the following slides. We receive the highest volume of category one requests year over year. The estimated fulfillment of this type is within about five to 30 business days. These are requests for records that are easily identifiable, are quickly accessible, and are the simplest for us to fulfill. In the bottom corner, you'll see how, how many we received so far compared to last year, and we are on pace to hitting that number again this year. Our category twos take longer to fulfill. They involve more effort than our category ones. The records are not as easily accessible and require coordination across departments to locate and review the records. We've received twice as many category twos to date. You'll notice these categories build on each other. A category three takes longer to fulfill and involves significant coordination between multiple departments and requires legal review. We've received more category threes to date this year compared to this time last year. So we are on track to receiving more category threes by year end. Our category fours usually take more than one year to fulfill. As you can see, for category two, three, and four, we are receiving more of these submissions. Moreover, we have noticed the complexity of each category four has increased, which Amber will discuss more later on. When we approach our category fours, we create a roadmap. And that is a hurricane. Yeah, respectfully, a hurricane. But in order to approach the storm, we create a roadmap documenting our search and where we are in the process. We make sure we work with the requester to understand what they're looking for, what search terms are agreeable for what they're looking for, and then we begin the fulfillment process over time. This requires significant staff coordination and review. Once all responsive records have been provided, we may then close the request. So conducting the search, these are the different programs. So conducting the search, these are the different programs we use to fulfill our PRRs depending on the record type being requested. I'd like to highlight that when we search for and review records, the city does not use AI tools to search and review records. These processes are all done by multiple staff and departments to fulfill the records requests. Samamish has established public records liaisons for each department, and I'd also like to share, Council, that Samamish has an incredible team, and all members of our staff step in to assist in fulfilling requests for our community members. We communicate regularly, and I have been incredibly grateful since I've started in September. I've, yeah, to be able to lean on my colleagues so that we can serve our city and just be better. I'll now pass it back off to Amber to go over trends.
Next, we want to share with you some of the trends that the city is seeing in recent requests. The city averages 40 to 55 requests open and in process each week, many of which are category threes and fours, and as Sabrina has shared, are complex in nature and are projected to take well over a year to complete. The city is seeing a trend in which most category threes and fours have multiple requests within the request. Thus, each PRR is often like having eight PRRs within the one. These requests seek records on multiple subject matters. They identify many people in which they're seeking records from, oftentimes from former staff or former council members. The timeframe for records being requested span over several years and often seek all forms of communication, which, as we identified earlier, may include emails, text messages, voicemails, Teams messages, social media messages. The list goes on and on, and that includes from both city devices as well as off of personal devices and accounts. The complexity of these requests results in hundreds of thousands of records that need to be searched for, sorted through, sent to our attorney for review, and will take years of installments to the Requestor before completion. As an agency that spends over 100,000 in costs associated with fulfilling PRRs, we're required to report to the State Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, JLRK. In 2023, the city reported our cost to be over 912,000 in fulfilling public record requests. Of that amount, over 340,000 was spent on litigation. The city takes seriously the duties associated with upholding the PRA in stance by our processes and procedures outlined in our policy, and these processes were recently affirmed by the Washington State Court of Appeals. As always, the city continues to improve its processes. Some of those ways highlighted here are the additional clerk staff assist in fulfilling category ones and twos. This allows for our PDO to dedicate more time to threes and fours while not taking away from our ability to provide quality customer service to the requesters with category ones and twos. Clerk staff participate in frequent records management, PRA trainings, and case law updates throughout the year to ensure that we're using best practices and that we're aware of any legal updates that may affect the work we do. And then shortly thereafter, we'll go into some of the proposed updates to our public records policy as well as our newest project. Tonight, the Clerk's Office is introducing a proposed policy change that we hope to bring to council for consent on June 3rd. The change adds a requirement of offboarding staff, commissioners, and elected officials to execute a declaration upon departure from the city, confirming that they have turned over any public records from their personal devices and accounts and has signed a declaration stating that they have done so. And now on to my personal favorite item of our presentation, our friend Project Elephant, which of course begs the question, how do you eat an elephant? The Clerk's Office is heading up an all-city paper records management project that we have affectionately named Project Elephant. This project aims to remove all of our approximately 1,300 boxes of paper records stored at Iron Mountain, which currently costs the city around 30,000 to 40,000 a year for storage. Retrieval of these records will allow the city to apply the newly updated state retention schedule to those records, many of which are eligible to be transferred to the state archivist or to digitize those frequently requested records. At the heart of Project Elephant is the overarching goal of record accessibility. The city aims to provide a record repository for residents to access those high retrieval records in a self-service manner, increasing efficiency and transparency in record requests. And we know it will take one bite at a time to eat this elephant. Staff is working to identify alternate, alternative storage options for our paper records and recognize that the one-time cost associated with removal from Iron Mountain will require us to come to council to seek approval for next steps. We're excited about Project Elephant. We know it's a lot of work ahead of us, but as custodians of the city's records, we see the value and benefit of working toward a more efficient way of managing our records, and ultimately, this improves service to our residents.
So Council, I just want to jump in one more time and sing the praises of the Clerk's Office, and particularly this Project Elephant is something that needs to get done and is a huge, huge, huge body of work and easy, I think, to pretend doesn't exist, right? Because they're all, 1,300 of them are stored somewhere else. And these folks, including Krista, Tenessa, and of course, the ever-present Debbie Beadle, are huge supporters and truly are excited about doing this work and making this different. And this will make a difference for the city. So long-term for financially, but also in terms of making sure, going through every single box, understanding everything that's in there, and then appropriately dealing with the records according with the state law. So kudos to all of you. Kudos to you for having such a great Clerk's Team, and we are here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Council. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I want to say thank you. I was glad you put a picture of a hurricane because as you were going through the categories, and I was thinking about the, some of the challenges that we've had and things with public records, that it does feel sometimes like a bit of a storm, and we appreciate you being the calm in that storm. And I am very glad you put the disclaimer that no elephants are being harmed during the project. My question is, is there any particular reason why we aren't experimenting with and looking to use AI to assist you with responding to public records requests? It does seem like a great use, especially as we look to the self-serve projects where we could use AI agents to help people who, again, may have a less-than-well-formed request. AI agents can walk them through to help them get to what they want.
I can speak to the self-serve, which, the self-serve is really focused on building permits and, and that sort of thing. And so those have to actually be, a large number of them need to be scanned first, right? And then you need, you need to do the metadata and the naming appropriately, so it goes by parcel number and by, so that may not be the best spot for AI. There may be opportunities in the future moving forward. I think that, I'm not sure that we want to lead, be the leaders of that in, in the area. I think we want to make sure that we are in compliance and in line with what the City Clerk's Association and state law is, is, you know, recommending. So I know we have someone very interested in AI and who's really following that technology closely, but I think we'll continue to, to, you know, let others lead and we'll learn from them and move forward from there.
Yeah, I wasn't able to find any laws that prohibit it, and it looks like the federal government is using that in some areas. Well, I know, I think from the previous administration. So it would be something interesting, and if, if and when you guys are ready to go there, let me know. I'd be happy to see how we could help, but especially to even help people formulate so you don't even maybe have to do the back and forth that an AI agent could help them formulate that so that when it comes to you, it's more specific and able to be filled. So AI agents are evolving quickly, and I think they could really maybe help bring your, your storm levels down. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lam.
Thank you for your work. You have a really hard job. The number 912,000 for the cost of category three and four, that was from 2023, do you have 2024 numbers?
Not yet. So we will, the JLRK report is due every summer, and so we are working on that now.
And the 340,000 for legal review, that is included in the 912?
But that was specific to litigation. We have a separate, our city attorney does a great job of keeping things, keeping things separate as far as they, for public records. So we have legal review as one category. The litigation is specific to public records is another one. So that 300,000 is specific to the litigation only.
Okay, so in total, it's like over a million dollars then, right?
Well, in total, it's the 912 for 2023. 300 of it was for litigation, then there would be a portion of it for all the work that they do to review the records before they are distributed.
Okay.
When the JLRK reports, we'll make sure we get that out to you, can see, can see all of the different buckets of money.
Okay, that would be great. I remember a while back that you guys were considering a process where if somebody requests like a huge request, that once those documents were available, it would be available for everybody? And is that something that we're already doing?
Yeah, yeah, we, once a request is closed, we include all, a link to a space. We use Hightail, and, and then anybody can go in and review the records that have been produced.
Okay, so that should be helpful in the future for a lot of these huge requests that's requesting like all communications. Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for all the work that you do. When I first got on council, there was nothing that stressed me out more than the PRR request. Thank you for, for taking all of that on. The self-service portal, I know that's a long-term goal, do you have any sense of what that time horizon is?
I think the first step is we need to understand what the paper records are that we have ahead of us. It's also going to require us to understand how we would set that up for the community to be able to use. And we're having those conversations with IT now, but I wouldn't expect us to come before you with any sort of plan for that until, you know, towards the end of next year at the earliest, probably associated with the next budget process.
Great, thank you. And then I had one more question on the, I think in the existing rules, on the attempts to obtain NISSAN declarations from former staff or council members. It outlines the process the city takes to contact them and contact them every month until records are stopped being produced, responsive records are stopped being produced. Is there any compulsion on those staff members or former officials, or is it just the city fulfills its obligations until a certain point?
Yeah, so as long as a public record request is open, the city will continue to attempt to obtain any records and a declaration stating that all records have been provided. After the city has, has provided to the Requestor all that it has in its possession, the city will let the former staff member or council member know that we have a date certain that we're going to close the request, and it's that final attempt for us to, you know, ask for any public records that they might have and to sign that declaration.
All right, thank you very much.
So much work. I'm glad that you have helped, but I'm sure it is not nearly enough. I just want to make sure I understand something. So we have to keep the paper record. We cannot just digitize it and do a big bonfire.
Some records are archivable, so they have to be kept in the original format.
Okay.
And they might also be able to be transferred to the state archives. There are also certain record series that can be scanned and tossed, so.
Okay.
There's a lot of different.
It just depends.
Yeah, it just depends on the record type.
Okay.
I'll add too, that part of, part of the process is we need to retrieve the records and review them because we're kind of trusting what was sent off to Iron Mountain in the first place, and we want to really make sure that, that we know and.
That you know what you know.
Yeah, before the bonfire, the legal bonfire.
It goes with the hurricane.
Yeah.
The, I do think that the idea of having people sign a release on exiting does make sense. Is there any legal challenge that we have heard of where some jurisdiction has said, no, no, that's not good enough?
I believe we're on the leading edge of having an offboarding process for employees, elected officials, appointed officials to sign a, an outgoing NISSAN declaration. I think that's a best practice, frankly, and so I'm not aware of any legal challenges with that process. I think that implementing it is a recommended best practice. So we've, have a track record of being very persistent in going, you know.
Right.
Following up with all of you, with everyone affected about, you know, making sure we get what we need to comply with our PRA obligations.
Okay, good, that's helpful. And I was just curious too, given the fact that these category four ones can go on for literally years, do you, at what point, are, do you, do you initiate checking back with the Requestor to see, are you still interested in pursuing?
Yeah, we track the installments through Hightail. We can see if a request has been viewed or downloaded. And when we send an installment, we do provide an email that says you must view or download within 30 days, or the request will be closed. And that is our, we have that ability through the PRA to do so. So if they no longer view, then we get to close that request.
I see. Okay, that's good. Again, thank you for this Herculean effort. We, we, we know what this is. It's a lot. So thank you for your time and for, actually, the presentation is very helpful to get this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I believe we could go to council reports and city manager's report. Would you like to kick off, Mr. City Manager?
Sure, Mayor, be happy to. So I want to let the community know, in case they haven't already seen, that next week's meeting on May 20th was canceled. So we won't have another meeting until, I believe it is the 3rd of June. So in the meantime, this Saturday, please come out and join us for Riga Palooza on the plaza right outside City Hall here from 11:00 to 2:00. It's going to be a fantastic event. And then just a reminder that in between those times as well is Memorial Day, and City Hall will be closed in observance of Memorial Day on Monday, May 26th. I also want to, along with the proclamation around Pride Month, remind that we will be raising the pride flag on June 1st. It will be flying the entire month with the exception of, I believe, oh.
Flag day.
What's that?
Flag day.
Not Flag Day, but Juneteenth, thank you, Councilmember. Brain just went blank there. And then the city's Pride event this year has been pushed a little later in the month so we can make sure and get the word out. We will be at the farmer's market on Wednesday, June 25th for that event. We encourage everyone to come out and join us. It should be a fantastic event, and hopefully the weather will cooperate, and we look forward to seeing everybody out there and joining us. Thank you, Mayor, back to you.
So council reports. Councilmember Gupta, do you have a report? Or, oh, actually, I'm sorry, Stewart.
Yeah, so the light rail is open at Marymore and Redmond. It's very exciting. The facility, the parking facility at Marymore Village is quite large. I think it's, was it 13, 1,400 parking spaces? And there's lots of fun businesses and shops around there now as well, and so it was a great event on Saturday. So please take advantage whenever you can. You can go all the way to South Bellevue, and if all goes well, we'll be crossing the lake before the end of the year. And I wanted to share an idea that I learned at said event from the Kirkland Council members, that they have an event called Junk in the Trunk, and they do like a community garage sale, and people can come. It's a huge success. I forget where they did it, I can find out, but they, people come and then they can sell their wares, and, and people come. If you've ever hosted a garage sale, sometimes it can be a very lonely event and not as fulfilling as you hoped it would be. They said it was a booming success. People were very excited, and I was hoping to share with our Samamish friends, friends, to let them know that until we have a thrift store or something of that nature, that that may be some, some type of an event that maybe we could partner on that had great community interest, and it's great for the environment to reuse and recycle our, my junk and your treasure. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lam.
I think the CWU parking lot would be perfect for that.
What's that?
I said, I think the CWU parking lot would be perfect for that.
Swapping.
I think we also discussed. I think we also discussed potentially Mary Queen of Peace in conjunction with the Farmer's Market.
Oh, yeah. I just had two things. One is I have a Board of Health meeting on Thursday, and I sent out the agenda, and the second is a follow-up on my solid waste advisory committee meeting. King County Solid Waste Division is proposing a rate increase for 2026. It is, for Samamish, it would be 5.7%. It's not a huge increase, but, you know, every increase obviously doesn't help. 5.7% translates to, for a 32-gallon can, $2.88 per month. Another positive thing that I learned is that S B 5284 passed, and for those of you that don't know, that is the Recycling Reform Act. That took three years, three tries to pass, and what that basically entails is establishing a statewide extended producer responsibility program, E P R for short, and it basically is putting the responsibility on the producers of consumer packaging and paper to bear the responsibility of helping defray the cost for municipalities for recycling. And so we don't know what is going to be the full outcome, but it will lower our recycling costs significantly, and California, Oregon, and British Columbia currently has E P R laws. I am a strong supporter of E P R because when you think, so the way the program should work is that the producers of these materials, they pay into a fund and then, in the state, and then the state distributes the money to the municipalities to help, you know, defray the cost for recycling. So I am super happy that it passed.
Councilmember Farrell.
I just wanted to let council know, on Thursday, I have Raya 8 Salmon Recovery Council meeting, and so I'll be sending you out information about that anon. Thank you.
I have a flood management and a joint recommendations committee, and I have a meeting with the Stokolmi Tribe, and I just had a light pop up for it. Councilmember Trean.
Yeah, just the 22nd, since we're not going to meet next week, on the Thursday, the 22nd, is the G M P C annual meeting, and so if, I'm, I'm already reserved to go, and I would be the voting member unless someone else wants to go and be the voting member, but that's all right. Okay, thanks. Yeah, we vote on the, the plan for the year. It's pretty basic.
What's the plan?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll send it to you as soon as I get it.
So do you have anything else?
I have public ish. I have a public issues committee meeting tomorrow. I did send out the meeting materials, and since we're not meeting next week, I will also have a King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting June 10th, and we'll share those out when I get materials.
Is there a motion to approve disbanding for this evening?
Move to adjourn would be another way of saying that.
Second.
Second.
I was using some flexibility here.
Can disband, council.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and good evening.